Good morning and welcome to the 2022 State of the County Breakfast presented by the Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce. My name is Nicholas Brogdon-Jeiza. I am the Vice President of Marketing at Harris Gulf Coast. It is great to see each of you here this morning for our address with guest speaker Kent Jones, President of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors. I would ask that you please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance led by Harry Paul.
God, I pray that you bless us this morning and keep us. Lord, make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray that we feel your presence because you are with us wherever we go. I pray that this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us as a body of believers. Let our actions today be valuable to our aim, which is to build up and edify one another. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Perry. Let me introduce to you the head table this morning. To my far right, Wendy Swetman, CEO, Swetman Security Services. Kent Jones, President of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors. Sam Sandoz, President of the Board Directors, Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce. To my far left, Harry Paul, a breaking spoon. And Kim Getz, IP Casino Resort Director of Marketing. There are also several other elected officials here this morning. We'd like to recognize by name Mayor Ratty of Past Christian. Mayor Bass of Long Beach. Mayor Hughes of Gulfport. Gulfport City Council, R. Lee Flowers and Trapp Casey. Harrison County Supervisors, Connie Rocker, Marlon Ledner and Beverly Martin. Harrison County Sheriff Troy Peterson and Jackson County Sheriff Mike Casell. I would ask the Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber Board President Sam Sandoz to come forward to make chamber remarks. Sam?
Good morning, everybody. I want to again welcome you to, or to come in today's event. We have over four hundred and twenty attendance today. So thank you for supporting the chamber and for your membership. It's hard to believe that we're already in August. The chamber is having a great year. And later in the program, you'll hear more about our small business grant awards that have already been given out here today. I'm always excited to see the chamber put great dollars back in the hands of our small business members. More details on that in just a bit. I want to very briefly mention a few events that we have coming up. Next week on August sixteenth, we have the Gulfport Chambers Legislative Luncheon with Senator Roger Wicker as our guest speaker. This event is almost sold out, so if you don't already have tickets, you might want to do so today. We have a chamber after five at the Hyatt Biloxi on August eighteenth. And a Women Engaging, Enriching, and Engaging will be held on August twenty sixth with Dr. Kate Peets. As always, make sure to check the calendar on the chamber website for more details and other upcoming events. Finally, I just want to give a personal thank you to all of the chamber staff members that worked tirelessly to put on events like this for all of us. Especially Alexis Higgins and Kendall Romero for their help putting all this together. Let's give them a round of applause. Again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Sam. The Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce is able to facilitate these and many of the programs because of the support of the business community and membership. Please allow me to take a moment and thank today's sponsors. First, I do want to recognize our title sponsor, Swetman Security. And ask Mr. Wendy Swetman to come forward for remarks.
Body relax, I got a timer. What a good looking group. Good morning, everybody. Great, great to be here as a, certainly as a real honor as a former contestant on Survivor, I mean, excuse me, member of the board of survivors. Been here till today. I'm here representing our family. Swetman Security is a family. And certainly all starts with the head of our company, our president, known, I want to recognize, it's also her birthday this weekend, my mom, she was seventeen, I'm gonna say it. Santa, Mom. Some forty-eight years ago, when my mom and dad met in Biloxi City Jail, mom had an alibi in there. Mom was a young juvenile officer. She graduated with degrees of degrees of relations. She went to constantly Biloxi City Jail. Together, well, here I am. They formed the company. They worked hard. Two people in Biloxi, Mississippi. Today, over four hundred full-time associates working every single day. And a lot of your establishments, your companies, your businesses across South Mississippi, so others is as strong as we've ever been. And the future looks good. We currently open offices in two other states. And we'll be held in Alabama and New Orleans, Louisiana. We're partnered there with another large company working throughout those three states. It's because of you, though. This is home here in South Mississippi. I'm from a big family. I was, mom's birthday this weekend, we were talking, I'm a Georgia, I grew careers in law enforcement. He made a donation that, they've been paying work in the Gulfport Police Department since nineteen twenty-nine. This was the first time since nineteen twenty-nine. And one of our paying family members weren't working at the Gulfport Police Department. My cousin Jason's still working in the city of Gulfport in the mayor's office right now, helping that team. Wayne Payne's granddaughter took over the office last week as a state Marine Officer, sixth generation law enforcement officer. That's a long legacy of over a hundred years of law enforcement officers in this community. And then the next side of that, the private sector. So here we are approaching almost half a century in the private sector, serving every day. I point that out to you because I'm fortunate to come from a family of servants, both public and private sector. And we've been very fortunate to have great careers and great support right here in South Mississippi. With that support, we kind of like to be able to give back to the chamber, to local community events. You might see it on the little league teams, or whether it be a mission trip for church and youth. It's our obligation, it's our responsibility. But thank you to you, the Gulf Coast community, for giving us the support for almost a hundred years here in South Mississippi. We can't thank you enough. To my friends on the Board of Supervisors, it is a great honor to be up here and be a proud sponsor. I know the jobs that you do. I have nothing but the utmost respect for each and every one of y'all. Thank y'all for your service. And with that being said, in three minutes, Wendy Swetman goes out, so y'all make another bet. Have a great day.
Andrew, you, Wendy, Wendy, the host sponsor for today's event, IP Casino Resort and Spa, this Kim Getz.
Good morning, everyone. I will keep this short and sweet because I know you're not good listening to me. Just want to take an opportunity to say thank you for joining us today. It is nice to not only see that the chamber was supported with all of the members participating today, but to actually see the bodies in the seats in this ring today is amazing. So either you have a lot of important things to share with us today, or they really like you and show it up. Thank you again for being here. And last, I'd like to take a moment to thank our food drivers and our banquet department for all that they did today. You know, I know a lot of you are going through the same struggles we are with my frontline team members. And it is nice to have them here to have a smile on their face and recognize that they do appreciate everything that you do for us. Appreciate it, and I will turn it over to my next speaker. Thank you.
We would like to acknowledge our presenting sponsors as well. They are Canadian Ambulance Services, American Medical Response, Bo Rabbaj Resort Casino, Ceasefire, Hancock Whitney, Harrison County Development Commission, Island View Casino and Resort, MP Design, Memorial Health System, Mississippi Power, Singing River Health System, Southern Mississippi Planning Development District, Tradition, Foreign Behaving. I'd also like to call your attention to your program for additional support in the form of T-able sponsors. Again, these companies support, allow the chamber to facilitate vital programs. We thank them all. The Mississippi Gulf Coast Chambers pleased to have a small business grant program available as a member benefit. Applications are accepted from any interested member, and the committee reviews and scores the grants. Thus far in 2022, the chamber and its divisions have awarded a total of fifty-one grants totaling forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Today, the chamber will present a grant to a veteran who owns a small business and a woman who owns a small business. I ask recipients to please come forward when their name is called to receive their checks. The veteran owned small business grant is presented to Five and Paint Flush Lounge in Biloxi. Please come forward. Once again, congratulations on having a much lighter handle. We'd like to present Liz and Nomi's Gourmet Heat Split Open and Own Small Business Grants. Please come forward. Congratulations to Liz and Nomi's Gourmet Heat. And now on to our program. Kent Jones currently serves as the President of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors. He is a lifelong resident of the Mississippi Gulf Coast and served on the Harrison County Board of Supervisors since two thousand and sixteen. Mr. Jones was born in Middelball, Mississippi, to Kaylee and the late Dan Jones. Moved to Gulfport at an early age. He graduated from Harrison Central High School in nineteen eighty. Mr. Jones graduated from the University of Southern Mississippi with a bachelor in science degree in criminal justice. He is the first player at Harrison Central High School to have his football jersey retired, which led to him being adopted into the Gulfport Sports Hall of Fame. Please welcome Mr. Kent Jones to the podium.
And I did, I was at home this morning, I was driving, I kind of got to the casino and coming up the stairs, I was really thinking, man, all this crowd is stripping for me. But I did that last set of stairs and I spent that baby. Doing the best that I can while I'm here. But I am indeed honored and it's a privilege to be in here this morning. I want to first thank the chamber for putting this on. They always do an outstanding job. The IP is host, always such gracious hosts. And all the other sponsors, I know it takes a lot of these kind of things together, so just good to be a part of it. We've already established a protocol as far as the active issues, but I do want to recognize a few other people. Before I get to my fellow board members, I want to recognize someone that never really gets the money. They never really shines. It's always behind the scenes, but they come to your office and it's supervisor, you didn't be with the board attorney there. Supervisor, and where a hospital wants you to come in and have a sit-down talk with them. There's always something going on. So I want to recognize their big stand, all of our administrative assistants. Thank you, guys. And I want to personally introduce my colleagues. We, sometimes we don't always agree. Honesty. But we do get on. At the end of the day, when we hit that gap, whether we're recessing or we're enjoying for the day, we always feel that we made the best decisions for our constituents. So I want to reach out to introduce District One Supervisor Beverly Martin. District Two Supervisor Rebecca Powers, had a prior engagement, so she couldn't be here, but you'll see her right here next year at the podium. Supervisor of District Three was Samarina Latner. Supervisor of District Five is Connie DeRocque, Rondo. And I am Kent Jones, the supervisor of District Four. As I stated, it's really a pleasure and an honor to be here. And I can't thank my constituents of District Four enough for voting me in to represent the county on their county payers. I've lived in Harrison County for many, many decades, and it always takes a community. It always takes a village. I have kids that were raised in Harrison County. It's up to the village. I have friends and relatives, live across all cities. It's up to the village. And for me to be here standing today is not because of me, it's because of that village and that community that helped me. So I'm very, very pleased to be here this morning with the help of my community, my village, my people. So we'll get this thing right. About a year ago when I was up, about four years ago when I was up here, you know, you couldn't get that in the word. But anyway, so today's theme is primarily going to be about community. It's going to be about neighborhoods. It's going to be about partnerships. And one very important aspect of the community, and I read this, is it is not more ignorance than we should be outgoing. We must attempt rather to bring people back to the warmth of community, to the work of individual effort and responsibility. And of individuals working together as community to better their lives and their children's future. That's what Robert Kennedy. Now, speaking about community and speaking about teamwork, you know, as a former football player, I know a thing or two about teamwork, about teammates. And there's nothing you can do without your team. So here going forward, we're going to discuss some things about our team, Harrison County. You may can call it employee, we'll call it teammates. We have, currently have nine hundred and eighty-two teammates working for the county. But we're dealing with a hundred and seventy million dollar budget, and our teammates get a good share of that. But, you know, just a, just an idea of where some of those, how those funds come in, they come in through taxes. Sixty-six percent of our revenue comes through taxes. Also, we have maybe eleven percent charged with other services, transfer clerks, circuit clerks, these kind of things. We have, also we have some operating grants that may be like nine percent, going down the line. But when those funds go out, thirty-three percent goes to our public safety. You know, Harrison County is growing, two hundred and eight thousand strong, but we can't be bigger than that if we don't have good safety and security. So we really emphasize that and put our money where our mouth is. General Government, that's our general obligations to our day-to-day operations, about twenty percent. And our Public Works Department, you know, everybody complains about their role, but we have guys out there daily. Sometimes at night or weekends, trying to catch up potholes and fix the poles. So if you hear a pothole or some citizen in one of our areas did a pothole, they don't have to make a decision on whether they're going to fix that tire, get that kid dressed for the car. So we want to make sure, get those kind of things. Another thing that I'm very proud of as a current board member is that in the past two decades, the Harrison County Board of Supervisors have not raised their taxes. And that's a testament to people like Mr. Swetman, Mr. John Johnson and his current board and board members for us that times get tough. You know, we've had, you know, we've had some black days. We had a lot of stormy nights. You know, we had tornadoes and hurricanes and floods and pandemics, but we never raised the taxes because we know how to cut back and become physically conservative. And I think that's what our constituents want, what it has us to do. But I will say this. This is kind of where, as my old football coach said, it's kind of hard where it's fair. What you have to notice is your taxes probably didn't go up in terms of taxing, it's for us when you go and pay your property tax. But don't get that confused with the county raising taxes. We didn't adjust the village. It's just your property you're praising for. And that's a testament to our tax assessor, this Paul Latner, who goes out and send her team out there to be appraised your taxes. The reason why I say this is kind of good, this is kind of bad, this is kind of hard where it's fair, is when you go to your bank and you want to get that loan, that refinance on your mortgage, and you ask yourself, what I want to do to remodel that? If you're an officer, okay, not a problem, just, what's in the praise about there? So the crazer walks up and, you know, you go up to him and be like, hey, you know, a couple of years ago, this thing was about two hundred thousand dollars. I know it's worth about three hundred thousand now. And you get what you want, right? Go back to the bank, raise the three hundred thousand, get the boat, get the remodel. However, that's outside of this one. You come in, you see Ms. Sharon Nash, a tax collector's office. Come time to pay those taxes, you're like, good God, why my taxes? So I cannot believe that I probably ain't going that much. It's hard, but it's fair. Also, another, another part of our team is, we take a lot of pride in our employees. We really, really empower them to do their job. We don't believe in written down the next. You know, you have a job to do, we're all grown, we're educated, we're well-trained, we just do it. And you look at some of the things that our team does, you know, we have four or five departments that our team has to keep up. We have seven community centers, ten sports town places, one playground, one dog park, seven senior centers, fourteen walking tracks, one law library, twenty-six miles of beautiful beach, ten hurricane shelters, eight splash pads, nine libraries, twenty parks, four bull marches with one under construction, fourteen fire stations, one under construction, one giraffe jail and one training facility under construction. Professional ball and court facilities under construction. That's just a lot of things that we do. And we have to give our credit to our director, Mr. Willie Allen, who oversees a lot of those projects and makes sure that things are, buildings are fine, playgrounds is good, as well as our playground, parks and playgrounds got. So we really empower those folks to do what they do and we're proud of them. But out of all the things that I just mentioned, one that really, really excites me and do my heart well is our splash pads. You know, we have splash pads throughout the county and throughout our cities, and we have to still locally agree with our cities till we come in and assist them and the time they can assist us. But one thing about those splash pads, they build in communities, and it's, we're talking, they were talking about communities. And those kids can go like a block or two away, or they can get in a car, they can go maybe a half a block away or maybe less than a mile. And they come to the splash pad, we just build them all over the place. And there's nothing like a kid, you cannot tell that kid, that five-year-old or that seven-year-old, you can't tell them this is not a water park. You know, because there's big waters on there, but it's, wow, I want to go to the water park. And the good thing behind that is it's in-house, we build those in-house. And the most important thing is it's free. Also part of our, our community is our safety and our security and, you know, in Harrison County, we have a new alert. We made this emergency management system, this will send out emergency alerts in real time. We have this crisis tracker. It's a new online damage reporting system where our residents can call themselves, report any damages in real time. And this is all part of the teamwork down by my emergency management directors and Matt Strad. Matt does a good job, also we're pleased with his work in his team. Now comes the big day, safety and security in terms of our services, our sheriff department. I, I think we have, you know, no offense, only have a tremendous fire chief in this passover. I think we have an awesome sheriff and sheriff, George Peterson. And our, our services is up, you know, council service is up. Last year we had over fifty-five hundred. This year we've got thirteen percent already. That's where the sheriff goes, we had a hundred and seventy telephone calls, a hundred and twenty-five of those end up being a council service. And I know Sheriff Peterson, I know Chief So, they are absolutely doing the best that they can do for to train their people, to educate their people, and to bring their payoff to others, because they understand what it means to have a safe and secure county. Because as I stated before, you're two hundred and eight thousand strong. We don't have time to not make sure we take care of our people. That's for me and that's for you as well. And as a former police officer, I knew that importance as well. Because I know, when I was working Detective Division, coming in at four in the afternoon, getting up at three or four in the morning, I never got a phone call at two in the morning. Just like these firemen, just like these law enforcement officers, or these, our first responders. We don't get a phone call at two in the morning, and his grandma says, the cook is ready, the milk is getting warm for you. We don't get that call. We get a call to respond, but we have to respond, have to react. So I take my hat off to safety and security. Then we got transportation, you know, usually that's used as kind of the backbone of the county because all the counter, all the winding roads and so forth. And we have a tremendous road manager, Timmy Smith, who stays on top of his job, has a good team. He has five assistant road managers, he's one of my districts, and those guys hustle. You know, you call them, it doesn't matter what time of day or night, they're coming, and they're coming with some equipment to fix the roads, it's the biggest claim. And we do over eight hundred miles of road waiting within Harrison County. We got twenty-eight point five miles of road paved, so forth, at a cost of below two million dollars. We also get some bridge repairs, costs of like a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Now, we also get some state aid assistance. Our state aid has happened with four asphalt road upgrades. That's about fifteen point six miles, two of them below two and a half million dollars. Three new bridge replacements that cost about two point seven million dollars. And one road reconstruction, like three hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And our state aid, ladies and gentlemen, is a great rack, I've done a great job working with team and I purchased a park, so we're real pleased with that as well. Then we have, of course, some new and improved online services. I think our IT director, Robo Turner, was here earlier, does a fine job, it's for us, hits us up online. You can almost just go fishing, you can, you put your water in, and put your line in the water, and you can get your land records, marriage records, tax information, online building permits. You know, we have a calendar, public events, and pay your fines and fees and so forth. It's a tremendous service that we glad had it thing up and running, and I think Robo worked kind of hard on that. So we really want to let him know, he and his teammates, how much we appreciate it now. And then we have, we continue on with our citizens services, where we're in the process now of building a twenty-two thousand square foot building complex that's going to house our Harrison County services. We're going to transfer code enforcement department, our planning and zoning department, our engineering, and our ongoing task leaders office, going to take those and put them in a new facility. And it's about a six million dollar project, not including the furniture, but however, we'll save the taxpayers money over time. And that's what we're going to do with the building theory now. They're old, it's maintenance, you know, we rent those buildings. I guess it's rent to own, we just refuse to own it, so we give up the name. So now that we're getting our own building, we can have those things paid off and keep moving out of the building. Also, something that supervisor Martin brought very hard on and did that due diligence of, is we have, across the section of the district, courthouse in Biloxi, we have approximately eighty-seven, eighty-five and ninety additional parking spaces. Sometimes that courthouse could get full like it would today, and we could use that additional parking. And we have our, and this is a very important part of our team as well, our veterans. You know, Harrison County is the leading county in the state with our veterans. We have approximately twenty, they're over twenty-two thousand. And we have a Veterans Affairs Officer, our Director, Julia Andre, that, she's, she's, she's awesome. And she, she's very passionate about what she do. You cannot not come correct when it comes to our veterans, when it comes to her. She will correctly help and help me, and we're really pleased with that. Then we have our Acrology Center, it's Jeanne Harrow, which is just like a one-stop shop trying to get to where you call, she can assess you, and she can put you in writing address or whatever resources that you need, and she can help you with that. That's been going on maybe about a year, so we're real pleased with that, and we expect the things out of that to continue. Also, we have our, continuing on with our services, we have a U-Port Division under Judge Michael Dixon. That's a type of passion, this guy's really passionate about what he do, and he's really, he's really good at it. good at it. And also, we have our Senior Resource Director, Ms. Janet May, who does our senior centers, several senior centers, and she does a tremendous job with those, we're real pleased with her with that. And as I stated earlier, you know, what's really, really key for us is the partnership. You know, we partner with a lot of entities, you know, whether it's budgets, oversiding, or financial contributions, in-kind contributions, you know, or perhaps a board director appointees. But we just feel that without our counties, without our, you know, the counties feel like, without our strong partnerships, without community, we just wouldn't be able to do anything that we're able to do. And you can see some of what we have, it's like our Harrison County school issues, whatever, our state statute, I just said the village, whatever they needed in the state statute. And that school, that school system is just indicative of the 280,000 people that we have now, because Harrison County school system has 13,640 students as of yesterday. And that's a tremendous, that's a tremendous growth, that's probably one of the second therapeutical school issues in the state, that Harrison County developing condition. Mr. Bill Labor, they do a great job, he's very enthusiastic. I think a lot of the time, Brandon has to say, calm down, calm down. He said, get him under control, but he can get hyped and get fired up when he gets things done. You see the Coast College Center Convention Center, let me tell you about Matt McDowell and his crew, you see, they're working. I mean, this is absolutely just mind-blowing that we can come off of pandemic, where everybody is afraid, get out. And then when you do release the equals, I mean, the college center is packed, which every time we open the doors. Now, although a lot of folks have a lot of money, I think it's the fact that how the regular market is how that Matt is true to. They're only paced, they have record years, and 45 in history of the college center, they have second graders to this day, so we're real pleased with them. Our tourist commission. I'm sure y'all are worried about that. But things are going good, we're getting along, things moving, that's right. Gulfport and Biloxi National Airport, Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College, Dr. Graham, that's through the team, does a fantastic job for us. Coast Transit Authority, Memorial Hospital, Kenny Goody's crew, they're doing a great job, they've got some issues to work on, I think we're going to be fine there. Mississippi State Port, as well as the Chamber. Now, some of the things that we have in the upcoming, some of the economic development things is, is, but pointing to that, just even indicative of how Harrison County just constantly growing, our building permits is up a whopping 42%, that's unprecedented. That's just tremendous growth. And our permits director, and so our code enforcement, Theresa Howard, who does a tremendous job, someone that always has a problem, she's carrying a team, getting the job done, and we're real pleased with them. As you see, we have Ocean Arrow coming into town, we have Beth Shul, and everyone is really excited about his buggies. Yeah, Willie's excited too, but Willie invested in about 15 million bucks on the interchange that makes sure the ingress, the ingress, that insect chain there is going to be a good thing for us. And then obviously, we have a rail system that is up and running, and it's, I think Bill Labor, Mr. Bill, he really did a good job, that I can recall, was Bill that granted him to the office, and he, whenever he comes to visit, he's always excited, you know, I mean, really, you got, it's gonna be okay, Bill, that kind of thing. But he's just excited, it's just how he is, you know, he just want to get things done. And he mentions some things, and he said, you can't tell him this is what we got cooking, you know, and also I get all hyped up, you know? But that's just how, that's the kind of guy he is. But, finally, he mentioned several years ago, that we was going to get this rail service going back again out there, in the industrial seaweed, and we got that rolling, first time in about eight years that we have rail cars now coming to John Faehaus, business out there. And a little jokey jokey, kind of like a rumor up there. This is my friend Bill. You know, he, obviously, when the railroads, when he got the railcars going, he was wanting to get on and test it, to make sure that was good. So he got on the rail, and there was a lady on his well. So, it was going, everything was pretty smooth around, and this lady, she looked up at Bill, and she said, every time you smile, I feel like inviting you to my place. Well, Bill looked at her, got all flushed, smiling, he said, aw, are you single? She said, no, I'm a dentist. That's a railroad joke. But anyhow, moving right along. We also have some other developments coming forward, we have a walk-in track, we have West Hampton County Sports Complex, softball field, and this is a tremendous project that is sponsored by our state agency slaters, thereby represented by the local people, Mr. Richard Bennett, and we're real proud of this project, we think it's going to be really good for us. Also have the Long Beach Harbor volleyball, volleyball, co-hosting the stadium, Biloxi River, and the rain road, the boat launch and park, the West Biloxi Park, boat launch. And if you can see, we just, we have such attention, I think we have such attention in this community outreach of Harrison County. Whether we're doing chocolate treating, or Christmas events, or Christmas in the park, and this year we have this kind of, she's a singer, come out and sing some Christmas care, it's whatever it takes to go out there. The Easter egg hunt, this past year, I think we did, over 22,000 eggs, with over 1,250 kids that showed up. And to think about how we do, and one thing that I like, is I like our Halloween, our trick or treats and so forth, we analyze our senses and so forth, but we have goodness for them. But during the course of the pandemic, obviously, we couldn't have, we couldn't meet in large crowds, we couldn't meet in big groups, so we trying to think now, how can we kind of continue this going, because you can't tell a five-year-old that they can't put their Halloween still on, go get some chew to chew candy, you can just forget that. And we understand, and they don't. So we just got a little creative, and we just said, okay, what we'll do then is, we'll still let the kids dress up, we'll be in our facilities, and we just do a drive-through, you know? Mom can pack a lot of little blocks, drive up, go to the car, go back, get us in there, say hi to the kids, take a few pictures, and keep going. But that's just where, that's part of our outreach program, but we just don't want to disappoint those kids on these certain events. And I think we did a great job of continuing that going, we'll continue to come forward. And I was told not to be up there very long, you know, my mom, I was told I was a well-behaved boy, so I'm not going to wind this thing up. But what I want to do, just to, while I do close, is I want to thank you guys for giving for, for coming to this, to state the county address. I just want to know that, I want you guys to know that, there's always a lot of black days and stormy nights, as I said before, but I just think we have that God in life, you know, that we're doing what, is that what we can do, the best that we can do of one, constituents and our system, will all lead you in the right direction. And in closing, I'm going to read you a verse from Psalms, chapter 133, verse 1, in it it says, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." God bless you guys, thank you so much.
Our thanks to Supervisor Kent Jones for serving as our speaker today, and for the attendance of members of the Board of Supervisors. Also, thanks again to Swedman Security for their title sponsorship, the IP Casino Resort for hosting this event this morning. On behalf of the Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce, I wish you a good day, and we are insured. Thank you again, everybody.